All right, it looks like it's time. We'll now call to order the Slanta Planning Commission meeting for November 5th, 2019. First on the agenda, the approval of minutes.
I move we approve the minutes as presented.
It's been motioned and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Move on. On to new business.
The first item of business under public hearings is an application filed by Ken Wasserman of Norton Wasserman Jones &amp; Kelly on behalf of Windsor Apartments LLC, which is Marvin Johnson. And they filed an application requesting approval of a conditional use permit to allow a six-unit apartment building in an R2 multifamily residential zoning district. And the property in question is 741-743 South Second. I will just provide a little bit of background as to why this is before you. But this was an application that was essentially an after-the-fact application where there had been some living units added to the basement of this building. And there was a compliance agreement entered into, which you have in your packet. And in that compliance agreement, the property owner was ordered to vacate those four basement units, which was done, and then they were required to remove the demising walls and items in the basement area. And the compliance agreement allows those to remain pending the outcome or resolution of the zoning application that they might file. They filed this application. We sat on the application to wait to see if variance applications would be filed or alternate applications would be filed. There were not applications filed, so we went ahead and advertised the hearing for today. The city attorney was contacted by Mr. Wasserman, who indicated he is not able to represent his client at today's hearing. And they have requested, and our bylaws would allow for postponement of this item for, to your next meeting, which should be December the 3rd, to allow the applicant's appointed representative to present his case. So at this time, on item 3.1, our recommendation would be to postpone consideration and continue the public hearing to your December 3rd, 2019 meeting. I'd be open to any questions you have about what was sent out to you. But we wouldn't normally, you can see the note on the front page of your agenda there, it says the applicant or appointed representative must be present in order to take action. We were informed yesterday that no one would be able to attend the hearing today, and so our recommendation would be to carry this item over to postpone consideration and continue the hearing to December 3rd.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Who was the second on that?
I was.
Try Berger? Eisenhower. So also on your public hearing, quasi-judicial agenda for this evening is an application, Z 1910, filed by Johnny B. Adam on behalf of Lloyds of Kansas LLC. And that application is requesting approval of a change in zoning district classification from C6 and residential suburban to C7 highway commercial. The property, the subject of this application, is a 7.19 acre tract of land located at the southeast corner of North Ninth Street and Stimel Road. This property is addressed as 1700 North Ninth. I'm going to wait for John to get our graphics up before I begin my report. You think we could start with the zoning map, John? So this colored map here gives you the best feel for this property. You can see that there is a corridor either side of North Ninth Street. It runs anywhere from 200 to 250 feet deep along Ninth Street, where the planning commission, city commission, basically established a band of commercial zoning along that frontage. That zoning actually extended all the way out north of I-70 to Pleasant Hill Road. But the zoning boundary didn't always necessarily correlate with property ownership boundaries. But that commercial zoning was put in place in the late 1960s, early 1970s, right after the interstate was constructed and opened, and before we had any floodplain mapping or floodplain regulations in effect. So the property that we are discussing is right here, and you can see that the front portion is Zone C6. And this portion that's white over here is RS, which is residential suburban, which is kind of our zoning that we would use for properties that are larger residential acreages. The other thing, there's, and I have to look to see if we have those maps in the packet. John, do we have the neighborhood revitalization map in the packet in your slides? The challenging thing about this particular piece of property is the fact that it is both in a conservation area and floodway. And then the city commission included it in the neighborhood revitalization area. That's not going to get you there, John. You need to be in the other folder. So why don't you just go back to the zoning map, John? So this particular property was annexed into the city in 1967. The front, or west, 240 feet, as you can see, was given a commercial zoning designation. And then when the city was comprehensively rezoned and remapped, the west 240 feet was Zone C6 heavy commercial. The property just in the far northwest corner was platted in 1969. And our research shows that the only commercial use of this property was as a site for Melvin Mobile Homes and later Clayton Homes. And there were no permanent buildings associated with these businesses. They sold manufactured homes, which were movable, and they had their sales offices in manufactured homes that were placed on the property. There is a storage building on the property that I believe was constructed by Joe Kronenberger, but it is, it's of unknown origin. We do have a map, I believe, John, that shows the floodway. So you may have to zoom a little bit so the shading can be seen. So all that area that you see crosshatched and diagonal there, essentially everything between the flood control levee and I-70 is mapped floodway. And as we note on page two there, new construction is generally prohibited within a floodway unless approved as a variance and certification by a registered professional engineers provided, demonstrating that the encroachments will not result in any increase in flood levels within the floodway. So this particular property was purchased by the applicant in April of 2017. The applicant had a plan for constructing a non-climatized storage building on the property. Staff advised the owner that we could not issue a building permit for a new building in the mapped floodway without a floodway variance. And a floodway variance application was eventually filed, but there was no analysis of the flood flows on Mulberry Creek. And so on August 17th, 2018, the Board of Zoning Appeals denied the floodway variance application. Just for your benefit, if you could go back to an aerial, John, or to a map of the area. Just, and you need to zoom out a little. What occurs in a 100-year flood event is that Mulberry Creek is over here. It tries to go under Ninth Street and I-70 and reach the Saline River. If that creek backs up, then it takes the path of least resistance and goes down Stimel Road instead, follows Stimel Road across Ohio, and goes over to the Saline River that way. And so that is one of the reasons that this property is in the mapped 100-year floodway, because it is in the floodway from Mulberry Creek. And the main way to think about the difference between floodway and floodplain is that floodway, you're generally having moving floodwaters with current, whereas in the floodplain, you have backed-up water that's standing and backs up. But the floodway has moving water, which has more potential for damage. The current owner is now interested in establishing an RV campground on this site. RV campgrounds are only allowed in agricultural, manufactured home park, and C7 zoning districts. To staff's knowledge, we currently don't have any RV campgrounds inside the city limits. We do have a couple in Saline County, close to the city. But as a first step to having zoning that would allow an RV campground and manufactured home sales lot, the request is to rezone this entire parcel to C7 highway commercial. And if that request were to be approved, then they would need to come back and submit conditional use for net applications and a specific plan for developing the site. And so because we're in the floodway, only uses that have a low damage potential that wouldn't obstruct flood flows are permitted. If you had a campground with no permanent buildings, that could potentially qualify as a low flood damage potential use. So as I noted, you ha, oh, John, can you go back to the maps, please? So the property is located in a conservation area because of its floodway status. And so your role today is to determine whether this tract of land is more suitable for some form of commercial development or continued agricultural use. We're not able to display on the map for you today the fact it is in your packet, the neighborhood revitalization area map. The neighborhood revitalization area was expanded in 2015 to include, the intent of the city commission was to include the area out at I-70 and Ninth Street, and they just continued that boundary in this area. So this property is a property in conflict in that it's in the floodway, but it's also in a revitalization incentive location. So as we look to the suitability of this site for development under existing zoning, one way to look at this is that this property is not suitable for any form of development because it is in the floodway, and new construction is generally prohibited within a floodway. Only the front portion of this property is zoned for commercial use, but even building on or using the existing commercial portion would be a challenge. However, because of the existing C6 zoning and the availability of neighborhood revitalization tax rebates, the property owner sees this property as having development potential despite the restrictions associated with being located in a floodway. As far as the character of the neighborhood, if you've driven the area, it's predominantly residential to the north and to the east, and development is spotty along North Ninth Street. But the nearest C7 zone property is up at the interchange, and so this property is not contiguous with the existing C7 property. And so this would extend C7 zoning, jumping over the track that's on the north side of Stimel Road. If you could go back to the zoning map, John, so we could talk about zoning. So this property right here is Zone C7. This is C5, and this is C6. So this, if we're made C7, would not be contiguous with any C7 area unless this property were also rezoned to C7. And C7 is usually associated with our interchange locations. So three things that we would note about the character of this neighborhood is that, one, this property's not adjacent to the interchange. Two, it's not contiguous with any other C7 zone parcel. The other thing is that if this request were approved, it would extend commercial zoning 450 feet to the east, and that would make it deeper than any other commercial zone parcel along North Ninth Street. So if this were approved, the commercial zoning would extend over to here, and you can see that's much deeper than what is currently there. We did get contacted by some property owners on North Fifth Street, who expressed their opposition to having commercial zoning extending all the way over to their west property line along here. As far as public utilities and services, this property is well situated with water and sanitary sewer service, which goes by this area in order to serve the interchange and the development north of the interchange. A good portion of this property is not platted, so a drainage study would be required as part of any application to plat this property. The North Ninth Street carries about 7,000 vehicles a day south of I-70. If you've seen Stimel Road, it is a public street, and it is somewhat hard-surfaced, but it does not meet public street standards. And if this property were zoned commercial and that were deepened, I don't think we would want to encourage having curb cuts and access onto Stimel Road. So we have the conflict between floodway and neighborhood revitalization, and we also have the conflict that was not really clearly resolved, although the planning commission has discussed it several times. We have a conservation area that matches up with our floodway, but this particular area was shown as with a commercial overlay in that conservation area to protect the existing commercial uses. So what we've laid out for you today was essentially two sets of findings. The one would be supportive of the applicant's request, and those findings could include the fact that the applicant believes that this property is suitable for commercial development, and the fact that it's inside the city limits and located within the city's neighborhood revitalization support that view. And the current zoning inhibits the development of this property for interstate-oriented uses such as an RV campground. It is feasible to develop a portion of this site with low-impact uses. Property is adjacent to existing commercial zoning. There is C7 zoning nearby, but it's closer to the interstate. There is paved street access, and we have utilities in place. And our comprehensive plan does show this as commercial, at least the first 250 feet. Findings that would support denial of this application and leaving it the way it is is that this property is in a designated conservation area between the levee and I-70, and it's in the mapped floodway from Mulberry Creek. And further development of the floodway should not be allowed. New development in the floodway could negatively impact flooding conditions on Stimel Road. Only uses having low damage potential should be allowed in the floodway. And if there were new structures proposed, they could be susceptible to flood damage. This is not adjacent to I-70 or existing C7 zone property, so C7's not appropriate in this location. And approval of this request, as presented, would create a commercial site that's 700 feet deep, which is deeper than any commercial site on the east side of Ninth Street. And then finally, the subject property is a conservation area where development is discouraged. So your options this afternoon would be to recommend approval of the applicant's request as submitted, subject to satisfactory plating of the property. You could approve C7 zoning, but for less than the full 7.19 acres being requested, you could recommend that consideration of this application be postponed to allow additional information to be presented. Or fourth, you could recommend denial of this application, provided that findings are made in support of denial of the requested zoning change. After wrestling with this and discussing it as a department, we feel like we're not in a position to recommend approval of the expanded C7 district in this location. But we have provided a set of findings in support of either alternative. And at this point, I would be happy to address any questions about our report, or any of the maps or attachments that you have in your packet that you would like additional information on.
Pages are marked. Let's see, attachment number two, second page, number five, impact on airport protection district.
Well, what those, we have discussed in our annual training, what attachment two is, it represents findings that have been set up by the Kansas Supreme Court for how to deal with zoning map changes. And the first four are taken from that Kansas Supreme Court guidance. The fifth is kind of a wild card for planning commissioners to take into account as you, they're not going to be applicable to every application, but there may be special sensitivity about protecting the central business district, or protecting historical landmarks, or protecting the airport flight approach zones, or protecting flood hazard areas. So those are factors that may not apply in every case, but may apply in some cases.
And it doesn't apply in this case.
The airport protection district, no, but the impact on flood hazard area would, yes. So we have given you a handout that lists the permitted and conditional uses allowed in C7. We have set out, we have a separate section for requirements for recreational campgrounds. We have provided you the comprehensive plan map, the conservation overlay map, and the neighborhood revitalization map in your packets. So if there's any questions about any of those maps, we would do our best to address them.
One other thing, too. Why would a campground be located there for RVs? I would think they would be the most susceptible to flood damage.
Well, the reason that things like manufactured home sales lots, or automobile sales lots, or RV campgrounds is that with sufficient, with any sort of warning, RVs are mobile, and they can be moved off the site if there's flooding anticipated or projected on Mulberry Creek, whereas if you had permanent buildings or stick-built homes on the property, and there's no place, you can't pick the homes up and move them in the event of a flood. So uses that are potentially movable, such as used in new vehicles, or campers, or manufactured homes that are on trailers, those can be moved in the event of a flood unless it's a flash flood with no warning. But the KOA campground that's on Diamond Drive, that's not in the floodway, but it is in the floodplain. And the Webster campground, portions of it at I-70 in Ohio are in the mapped floodplain, but that's higher up, closer to the interchange. But those are two RV campgrounds, but neither of those are in the city limits.
Okay, are the Webster locations on the east side of the road?
Yes, at I-70 in north Ohio.
Is the applicant present?
The applicant is present, yes. So if you have no further questions of staff, it'd be appropriate to hear from the applicant and any public that was interested in speaking.
Hello, I'm John Adam. I'm the architect. You have any questions?
Anything you'd like to add to what was already presented?
No, we're just trying to improve the site and development, give a place for people to come off the highway, either I-35 or I-70, a place to rest, utilize things in the city. Also contractors, we have a lot of construction going on. Be a great place for contractors to put an RV there as opposed to lodging in a motel. It'd be more cost-effective for the contractor, plus, that's all we're trying to do. Right now, it's not developed, it's piles of soil, dirt, you know, just want to clean it up.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I'm Lonnie Wilson, and I own the property that's there. Basically, I had purchased the property with the idea of being able to maybe put up some storage buildings on there, and wasn't able to do that. I'm just trying to find a good use for the property. I can put a truck sales lot, or a mobile home sales lot, or something that's movable up on the front part, but that's not really what I want to do. I think there is a need for a campground, a good campground. And that's what I'm proposing to put in there, give the people traveling through, and also the people that come into Slanta to work. A lot of these workers rather stay in a motel, they can stay in a camper, it's more like staying in a home, you know, mobile, some of these are pretty nice, and they'll be here for two or three months. And that's what my intentions were. If we get approval on this, we'll have a professional campground designer come in and do this. But quite frankly, I don't want to spend any more money if I'm going to be shot down on it. And that's it. Just trying to make use of a piece of property that I own that I can't use right now, other than the reasons I don't want to do. I don't want to have a mobile home sales lot, and I don't want to have a truck-trailer sales lot. That's not what I want to do. Any questions for me, I'll be glad to try to answer them. Thank you.
I have a question. Are you open to have?
Are you open to having the zoning not be quite as deep to match the properties?
I'd like to utilize the background because I think it's probably the most desirable because it's less far, it's back from on the highway. I think if you're back father there, you don't have the road noise and everything else and, you know, what, you've got a lot of $100,000, $200,000 motorhomes going down the road. And it's, you know, these are retired people's places to go live when they're traveling through. So we'll landscape it, we'll make it look nice, it'll be done to code, but I just need -- my preference would be to use that because what am I going to use the back property for if I don't have it? I guess, you know, I can't build houses on it. I guess I could pony out there or something, but that's about it, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any members of the public that wish to make any comments about this or?
I'm Judy Schmelsley. I live at 1733 North Fifth, and so my property is just right east of it. And I am concerned because of the campers getting so close to my fence line. In the past, I've had horses on my property, so, you know, I'm concerned about that. And then also I'm concerned, you know, since we are in the floodway, you know, how much more water would come my way. And so those are two basic concerns. And I'm also concerned about those big piles of dirt that are on that property right now too. I don't understand them at all. And so we've, I've lived there since 1984 and, you know, we've had hardly anybody using that property right west of us. I think Mr. Miller, Farmers, he had a garden there and then I think a guy across the road had a garden, but most of the years that property has been, nothing's been happening on it. And so here it is, all these years later, you know, I'm going to have neighbors right west of me, so I'm concerned. So that's, I just wanted to say that.
So in a perfect world, the property would stay as it currently is?
Yeah, I'd like for it to stay agricultural, you know. My goal was, my husband died last year, and so I planned to sell my property probably within five years. And I want to sell it so the people that move in there can have a horse or two, because I do have a barn there. And it's set up for horses. And so I want to continue, you know, that.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else from the public?
I'm Freddy Jackson, I live on 200 West Stimwell Road. When Joe Cronberg ran, he let me have a garden over there. I've had a garden there for four or five years. And Mr. Wilson bought it, he said, well, I'll get stuff off, I bought the property. And another thing is, he dug a great big hole back there, and that's where all that dirt's come from. I don't know what it's for, I don't know if there's any, there's no fencing or nothing around that I know of, and there could be animals in there or whatever. It's just, I don't know why he done it, but he did.
Okay, thank you.
I want it to stay the way it is.
I understand. Anyone else from the public? Any further discussion?
I just had a question. I heard about it staying agriculture, but it is C-6, right?
The front portion is C-6. If you want to go back to the zoning map, John, again, without respect to property ownership boundaries or anything, the, in the late 1960s, the city commission and through the planning commission to them basically just took a line 250 feet off of Ninth Street and said, we think all that's going to be commercial. And they put that zoning boundary there, so that west 240 feet has been zoned commercial since 1960s.
And then east of there?
And east of there has always been residential. And so when there was a manufactured home sales lot, which was Melvin Mobile Homes, it was located on this portion here, but there's never been any active use here. And then as to the, as to the hole that we noticed in our photographs, and I think we have pictures, as part of the floodway variance request that was applied for in 2017, the owner's engineer erroneously believed that digging a hole there would somehow allow for floodway development in the area on this property. And that was an incorrect assumption. And so the hole was dug as part of that 2017 floodway variance request. And we will actually be corresponding with the owner to get that hole filled in because to do that sort of dirt work requires a floodway development permit. And this property doesn't have a grading or excavation permit to have that, so we're going to ask that hole to be filled in and restored back to its natural grade. Your question about ag use, the RS district does allow for ag uses. Just a clarification, that livestock is not permitted inside the city limits, but an owner can request a permit to keep horses, a limited number of horses, inside the city limits, but other forms of livestock are not allowed inside the city limits. So an owner can petition for a permit to keep horses inside the city if they have enough land area. And so the RS district would allow for orchards, crops, other types of things on the RS zone portion of this property. But if the, if the application is not recommended for approval, then the portion that's C-6 would remain C-6, the portion that's RS would remain RS. And so no commercial use or activity could take place on the RS zone portion of the property.
Ready for motion?
I have a question for the applicant. Is your intent for the driveway and parking areas, is that, are you looking at having that paved in asphalt or is that going to be a gravel surface that would be permeable to water? Do you have any plans of that at the moment?
I would prefer to put gravel or blacktop millings down as far as the entranceway.
I need to, yeah, thank you.
My preference is if I put a private road in there to service these locations for the KOA grant, would be put a gravel base with maybe blacktop millings over the top to keep the dust down. That's what my preference would be. It'd be a lot less expensive than putting, trying to pave it, you know.
Correct.
And plus, like you said, it would also help on water being able to soak down and not run off.
Excellent question as well, that just occurred to me. Do you have anything in place to ensure that these people utilizing the campground would be good neighbors to the people in the neighborhood as far as?
I have no answer for that. I can't tell you who, whether you're going to have a senator come through in his motorhome and want to pull out there and stay, or you're going to have, I just have no control over who would be there. It's like checking into a motel. How do you check, have a control over the people that check into a motel?
I understand, I just, I was guessing more terms of like, more of a tenant, property owner relationship.
Now, there would be, yeah, I'm sure, there's going to be landscaping and there'll be trash containers that'll be emptied all the time, you know, and there'll be a maintenance crew taking care of the area, yes. If you have a lousy-looking campground, nobody's going to want to stay there. So you've got to keep it up, otherwise you're not going to be in business.
Makes good sense. Thank you.
Anything else?
Are we ready for a motion?
I will, are you making one? I'll make one, because we have discussed this particular area numerous times over the last years. And I think item number six on potential findings in support of denial, the fact that this is part of a conservation area where we have discussed future development not happening and certainly not rezoning to more commercial. So given that and the studies that we've done along that corridor, I am going to move for denial of application Z-19-10 with the six potential findings as listed by staff on page eight.
I second it.
It's been motioned and seconded. Those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
So we have, how many in favor of the motion? Could you raise your hand? And one opposed? That concludes the quasi-judicial portion of your agenda. And the next item is a legislative matter, and that's application Z-195A filed by you as the city planning commission. And the request was amendment of sections 42, 503, and 504. And the text amendment was to clarify what signs are and are not allowed to be located in the public right-of-way. And that item was returned by the city commission to this body to reconsider your October 1st recommendation. And the, we have provided a summary in your staff report of the exceptions that are being proposed. And I will just walk through those quickly. There's eight exceptions that are being proposed as part of this request. And the first exception deals with the ability to have essentially traffic safety or public safety signs in the public right-of-way. And we have also identified for you who the impacted party or primary stakeholder would be for those exceptions. So exception one would authorize governmental signs that are placed by or at the direction of a local, state, or federal government to be located in the public right-of-way. And our Public Works Department and KDOT would be the primary beneficiaries of that exception. The second proposed exception is a continuation of a longstanding exception that allows projecting signs to project out over the public right-of-way in our downtown zoning district. And our primary stakeholder affected by that is Salina Downtown, Inc., and our downtown building and property owners. The third exception that we're proposing to codify would be an exception that allows movable A-frame and sandwich board signs to be set out on public sidewalks, plazas, and alleys in the downtown zoning district. And again, Salina Downtown Incorporated and our downtown arts and entertainment steering committee have been discussing that exception. Exception number four provides a mechanism for the city commission to approve the placement of subdivision entry signs. If you are aware, some of our subdivisions have divided medians or entryways at the entrance into the subdivision from perimeter streets. And this exception just codifies what has been done in practice, which is to allow those signs to be placed in the public right-of-way. Exception number five establishes a program that would allow the hanging of vertical banners on light poles and utility poles. Our stakeholders that we're working with on that would be Westar for their poles, they require a pole attachment agreement. And there's needs to be coordination between the people wanting to hang the banners and Westar if it's not a city pole. North Salina Community Development is working on a project to hang those types of banners on North Ninth and North Broadway. Kansas Wesleyan, the same, on Cloud Street and Claflin. And Salina Downtown, Inc. is also interested in that in the downtown area. The sixth exception would allow the city to set up a program to authorize decorative flags to be placed on light poles in the downtown business improvement district. And again, we're working with downtown arts and entertainment steering committee on that. The seventh one, we discussed in September, which is our state legislature has mandated that we allow temporary yard signs to be placed in the public right-of-way of a public street during the period prior to an election, which we are in up to today. And then exception number eight would codify the authority of the city commission to authorize the placement of signs on bus stop benches and shelters located in a public right-of-way through a written agreement. And the primary stakeholder or impacted party with that would be our City Go Bus System and OCCK. So at your October 1st meeting, we presented you with two different options drafted by the city legal counsel. And option one, disallowed advertising signs on bus stop benches located in residential zoning districts. The second option would allow advertising signs to be placed on bus stop benches anywhere within the city regardless of zoning. The planning commission recommended option number one to disallow advertising signs on bus stop benches in residential zoning districts. We explained to you at the October 1st meeting that that would rule out about one-third of the locations that OCCK presently has bus stops at. That recommendation went to the city commission at their October 21st meeting. They voted to return this item to you and asked you to discuss and consider some specific items. One thing they wanted to have you discuss and consider was whether to regulate the placement of advertising signs on bus stop benches based on the classification of the street instead of the adjacent zoning district classification. In other words, allowing signs to be placed on benches located on Arterial and Collector Streets, but not on local residential streets. And we included a copy of the city's official street classification map. And John, I'm going to ask you to go to Dustin's handout and put it on the screen, and I'm going to ask Dustin to go over this handout, which is not in your packets, but we would So as just a point of review, the information provided from OCCK indicates they have 178 total number of bus stops. 117 of those are in non-residential zoned areas, 61 are in residential zoned areas. One of the questions posed by the city commission at their meeting, they asked me if, and I can't say that there is because I don't have the map memorized, but they said if there is a bus stop at the corner of Minneapolis and Ohio, all the abutting zoning there is residential. And their question to me is, why is it not okay for them to have advertising sign on a bus stop bench at Minneapolis and Ohio, given that Ohio is a heavily-traveled arterial street? So one of the things they asked the planning commission and staff to look at is taking the approach of looking at the street the approach of looking at the street classification that the bus stop benches or bus stops are on as opposed to the adjacent zoning. So Dustin's project was to, first, we looked at residential and non-residential zoning. And Dustin has looked at the bus stops by what classification of street they're on. So I'm going to let Dustin explain what his research found.
So I've got the simple table here that's kind of in the middle of the screen that you're looking at. And there's three primary classifications that we have of streets. One is arterials. That would be like Ninth Street and Ohio Street would be our north-south arterials. And then you have east-west arterials like Crawford, Magnolia, and roads like that. And so I've broken it down. Here are your arterials. This is the number of non-residential per arterial road. And these are the residential per arterial road. And you'll see that there's about a two-to-one ratio of non-residential to residential. But there are, and this is zoning, but there are a number of residentially zoned properties along arterial streets that do have bus stops near them. I did the same exercise with the collector streets. And there are quite a few more collector streets than there are arterial streets on our tree, our street tree. But you can see that most of them don't have bus stops at all. And there's only 16 total on all of the collector streets combined. And it's a near 50/50 split on how that breaks out. And we do have a map I can show you, and you can just kind of see. You'll see that there's a red route, a blue route, a yellow route, a purple route, and a green route. And for the most part, most of the routes are going to be using those arterial and collector streets because that's where people are really wanting to get to. That's where your shopping is. That's where your, the arterial streets are designed to move traffic through and across town. And so what we did is we actually just went through and looked at each of the routes and turned on the zoning layer map so that we could see where the bus stops are in relation to, in relation to the routes and the underlying zoning. And so you see along Ohio, there are a number of bus stops that are in residentially zoned areas that are highly traveled. Even though these are residentially zoned areas, there are a lot of cars that travel up and down Ohio as it is a main arterial. So that's something to consider. That's something that the City Commission was interested in. Are there any questions? Does that make sense as to what we're dealing with there in terms of the number of bus stops that are non-residentially zoned and those that are residentially zoned among those different street classifications?
So for their, everyone's benefit Dustin, under the original recommendation, 61 of the 178 bus stops would have been ruled out as locations for advertising signs. If the collector and arterial streets was used instead, what is the number of locations that would be ruled out because they're on residential streets?
It looks like 15 would be ruled out because the other, so these here would be ruled out if you accepted signs on these, on arterial streets and collector streets. Because there's 37 bus stops on the arterial streets that are residentially zoned, and there are nine bus stops on collector streets that are residentially zoned. So that would leave the 15 residentially zoned bus stops that are on local streets.
Do they have signs?
No. The only signs that we currently have are 15 signs, and that's what this is showing here, or 15 bus stops have signs. And 13 of those are non-residential already. The only two residential bus stops that currently have signs are Salvation Army and the Martin Luther King Junior Child Care Center on North Santa Fe. So even those, even though they're residentially zoned, they're adjacent to institutional-type land uses and not traditional residential dwellings.
The collector streets would, what would those be? Or just, do you show it? Color or line or whatever?
Yeah. So collector streets are going to be things like Arnold Avenue, which is now out by the airport. Cherokee Drive is an example. Ray Avenue, Quincy Avenue. Marymount is probably the most well-known on the list as far as something that people would be familiar with as a high-traffic thoroughfare, but it doesn't have any bus stops on it. Markley Road is also a fairly high-traffic one. It doesn't have bus stops. Nor Street is, carries quite a bit of traffic. It does have three, but they're non-residential. Republic Avenue has two that are residentially zoned. And there's a portion of cloud that's arterial, and there's a portion of cloud that's collector. And the collector portion is the further east portion, east of Ohio versus the west of Ohio portion of cloud. And it doesn't have any on the arterial side or the collector side. So those are some examples of what a collector street might be. And arterial streets in the hierarchy, the street tree hierarchy, are going to be your highest traffic volume. And they're designed to really carry cars across town and not really to necessarily destinations. Collector streets are designed to collect vehicles from the local neighborhoods and then get them to the arterials. And the local streets are where you're going to have your primary land use access. And those are going to be your residential neighborhoods usually. But there are, there are commercial activities that take place that are accessed by what we call local streets as well.
So one of the things that city commissioners asked us at the October 21st meeting was whether we had considered regulating the placement of signs on bus stop benches based on the classification of the street. Our answer was no, but we would take a look at it, which we have done and provided you with that information if that was another way to regulate the placement. Of course, the alternative to that is to allow signs on any and every bus stop bench regardless of location, regardless of zoning, regardless of street classification. Another question they asked was whether the Planning Commission considered limiting the signage to benches only and not allowing signs to be placed on the shelter structures or other facilities. So the other question they asked was whether the language should be modified to require signs to be oriented towards and face the abutting street. So Dustin, I was going to see if we could minimize or get out of this and go back to the actual language that the legal counsel prepared so we could look at that.
Sure.
So you just, you're scrolling past it. You need to go back down.
Okay.
Okay, well, scroll past it again.
Okay.
Okay. It's above where you're showing. Right there. Okay. This, and it wasn't, you can't say that this was your idea, your language, because it was actually drafted by the city's legal counsel. But it says that signs authorized by the city to be permanently fixed on bus benches, bus shelters, or other public transportation facilities. Some city commissioners wanted or asked whether you had considered limiting the signage to be affixed to the benches only. There was some concern about, from commissioners, about having the signs on the shelter structures as well as the benches. And so one thing that is an alternative would be to go in and strike the term bus shelters and other public transportation facilities and just include the term benches only. And then the other question they asked was whether, as this is drafted, it required that the signs face the street. I don't think necessarily that has to be included in the code portion of this because there would be a written agreement between the City Commission and the transit provider to set out the limitations on the signage. But the one thing they specifically asked was, a number of city commissioners didn't want to see the signs placed on shelters or other facilities. They just wanted to see them on benches. And so the other thing they asked was for an opportunity for representatives of OCCK to have additional opportunity to speak to and address the Planning Commission about their goals as it relates to their sign program and advertising sponsorship. So this has been brought back to you, and you've been asked to discuss and consider the alternative of using street classification, whether you want to consider limiting signs to benches only, and whether you want to modify the language to require the signs to be oriented towards and face the abutting street. And then you're also asked to receive and consider additional input from representatives of OCCK.
I have a question for Dustin. The way that it was currently worded, it excluded 61 stops total, correct?
Yes.
And then if we were to reword it from the zoning to just the arterial and collector streets, it would knock out 51. Is that right?
If you didn't tie zoning to it.
Correct.
Yeah. Right here, this would be your classic, your category.
So if that language is modified to say that it would be authorized on bus stop benches located on arterial and collector streets, that means that instead of 117, it would be 127 allowed locations. So there's not a, there's not a great variation between the two approaches. But for some city commissioners, it intuitively made more sense to them to do it based on the classification of the street and its traffic volume than on what the adjacent zoning was, so.
Yeah. Even though you're eliminating 51, you probably don't have a lot of demand for advertising on those 51 streets. Because they're in residential neighborhoods.
Right. And that was kind of my concern was those are, they may be placed on commercial property, but it's probably going to be surrounded by more residential neighborhood than not.
Yeah. And you're not going to have the traffic numbers. I mean, by virtue of them being local streets.
On page six of Planning Commission actions, I like number three. I think it conforms to the reason why we restricted stops on residential streets. But, you know, if you've got 10,000 cars going by your house, what's a one bench going to matter? And then I'm wondering if we're restricting this to only city buses. What about bikes and scooters?
Well, there is a, we have some bike share stations. Some of them are located on city right of way. There's a master license agreement associated with that, and that master license agreement addresses the signage on those bike share stations. And so the, they are going to be relatively small and not really readily visible to the traveling public. They might be visible to the bike share station users but not to the general public. So the city attorney didn't see a reason to address those in this code amendment just because of the scale of those. But those are addressed in the bike share docking station master license agreement.
I'm not sure if this is helpful, but this does show the functional hierarchy of the streets, this map here. And this reddish-brown color, those are major arterial streets. That's things like Broadway, Ninth, Ohio. And those are the north-south main thoroughfares. And you have Iron, Crawford, Magnolia, and Schilling. And those are the east-west ones. And then you have the blue, the blue lines that you see there are the, what we call minor arterials. They're still arterial streets, but they just fall into a minor category. And then you have the green, which are the collector, and everything else is the, are the local streets. So we have a lot of local streets. We have a decent number of collector streets. And then we have a few arterials. And that's kind of how, it's like a tree. That's why they call it a functional tree is because you have, the local streets are kind of the branches that are the twigs at the end, and that leads into, go into the collectors, the collectors then funnel traffic to the arterials.
You mentioned the issue of including the bus stop or the structure and so on with the advertising. It isn't changed, there's nothing here that will answer or speak to that, I think. Do we need to respond?
In number three?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's nothing in, what I said in number three as an option, I only included the term benches in there. So, but if we could go back to the text language, several of the city commissioners felt like they were supportive of as long as on the benches, but they were concerned about that if there were shelters with three sides on them or other things, that they weren't as supportive of having the signs on the shelters themselves. So they asked you to discuss and consider whether this, these terms right here should be deleted from the text so it would read signs authorized by the city to be permanently fixed on bus benches located in the public right of way and delete that. So if you were supportive of deleting that, you would want to make that a part of any motion. But we do want to provide an opportunity to have representatives OCCK address the City Commission because we have monopolized the dialogue here, so.
Hi, Michelle Griffin, Transportation Director, OCCK. So I just have a couple quick comments. So I just wanted to clarify that the bench advertising was requested by the Salina City Commission in 2014 to help supplement funding of City Go and Paratransit Services. That was a request made in that timeframe. We've done a lot of review of our bench advertising in the last few weeks. We appreciate all of the city's work on this. It's become apparent to us that it's probably in our best interest to discontinue the bench ad program at this time. It's very, very minute part of our budget, but takes a substantial amount of time to run, oversee, manage. So that's really all of my comments at this time. Questions?
I would have thought for no more money than people paid for that spot. It wasn't worth any of this discussion. It wasn't worth any of this discussion.
Well, that's.
Great, well, that fixes that.
Thank you.
Well, we would, our, our comment to this is that it is, in our extensive review of sign codes relating to this text amendment, to the temporary signs and temporary yard signs, we do have found that it is quite, this right-of-way sign exception is quite common in sign codes in municipalities that do have a, a public transit system. And we still think it may be beneficial to have ground rules in place, even if they're not utilized at this time, because then they would be in place if there was any interest in resuming that or picking it up in the future. And just because you have a place in the ordinance and nobody's taking advantage of that doesn't mean that it's not, might not be useful in the future. So even with that being said, we still think it's useful to have a exception to right-of-way signs that would allow for transit providers to have signs located on bus benches within the public right-of-way. So, we don't see any reason necessarily to strike this other than the, maybe the urgency or the thinking about how it impacts OCCK at the present is maybe less pressing. But for us, having gone through this steps and all the research and hearings that we've had, we still think that it would be beneficial to have this eighth exception, and it would be beneficial for the planning commission to weigh in on what you think the best approach is for, for allowing for that. Because we could be in a situation three or four or five years from now where there might be interest in resuming that. There are also communities where advertising is on the bus vehicles themselves, which is, which is another matter that would not come under the sign code. But we do think that having this exemption in place for the future, given all the work we've done at this point to, to research and come up with options, we still feel it would be beneficial, even if it's not immediately utilized.
I feel that based on our findings and just concerns that we have had in the past on this, and knowing that OCCK at this time is not even interested in pursuing it, that we could almost remove collector streets from it too and just keep them to the arterials where the majority of the traffic is. And that's getting them out of the residential areas more often than not. Because if you look at, especially on the collector streets, we only have nine residentially zoned of 16. So the majority of those are all residential. So if we were to just say allowed on arterial streets only on the benches.
I agree, and then with also the correction or the exemption from the, the sentence about.
The shelters.
The shelters not being a part of it and just the benches themselves.
Yes, that's the way that we worded option three. We only included the word placed on bus stop benches and didn't include the rest, just to provide an opportunity to kind of do that in all, all single motion if that was your desire.
Public transportation buildings wouldn't be in the right-of-way anyway.
No, we're only, we're only talking about, we're only talking about the fact that our, our bus stop bench locations are under the agreement that OCCK has with the city commission, which was just renewed last night, that allows their bus stops and their facilities to be located in the public right-of-way. The city commission has authorized that, but this is, this deals with what signs can be placed in the right-of-way, not, not the benches or the structures or stops themselves. So this is, this is limited strictly to the regulation of the placement of signs in the right-of-way. And again, the reason for setting out the exceptions is that you can't, as a general rule, put signs, businesses can't put signs in the public right-of-way. So that is, that is the purpose of carving out these exceptions.
I do have one more comment. So we keep saying that these are our bus stops, as in OCCK's bus stops. They're not. They are the general public's bus stops, and I think that's important for everybody to remember that we are doing a public service for the entire community. We're not doing it for our own benefit. We're doing it for the good of the entire city, all 50,000 residents. So I think we need to keep that in mind as you're moving forward, that what we're doing is for everyone's benefit, not ours. So I guess instead of saying our bus stops, you should say your bus stops.
What you do on, you do own the benches, don't you?
I'm not sure what you mean by that. I don't know that we necessarily own them. They are purchased with federal and state money as long, as well as city money. So I guess I'm not sure what would happen to the benches if we stopped running public transportation. I would assume that we would pass those on to whoever takes over if that were the case. Is that it?
Thank you. Any members of the public to which to comment? Any further discussion?
Well, I voted against the motion the first time because I am okay with being less restrictive. I guess I think economics will dictate where the advertising is and that probably, most likely, people wouldn't advertise on these lesser traveled streets. And I guess what I'm hearing from, and I don't recall, if we just went with arterial streets, I guess I'm, one of the questions is, are you, would the motion be, or what are you guys thinking on arterial streets? Would you go ahead and allow for residential zoning?
I think, I think we would allow for residential zoning on arterial streets.
Okay.
Yeah, and just remove the zoning clause from it altogether and just do it based on the arterial street location.
So, just review for you on page six of your report. You've, you've received comments from the public and had an additional discussion. You've, the alternatives would be, your original recommendation was to limit the, exclude the signs from residential zoning districts. So option one would be, you could resubmit the exact same recommendation you made originally. Option two is the option that Ms. Good voted for at the, that meeting, which would, you could simply recommend that signs be allowed to be placed on bus stop benches anywhere at the city regardless of zoning. Option three, you could modify your recommendation to recommend that the signs be placed on bus stop benches located on arterial and collector streets, but not at locations on residential streets. A variation of that would be to strike the word in collector streets and just say, placed at bus stop benches located on arterial streets, but not locations on collector and residential streets. You could recommend any other changes that you saw fit to make to the text, or you could further postpone consideration of this to allow us to make major revisions. So, option one is resubmitting the exact same recommendation you made October 1st. Option two would be to take the approach that Ms. Good favored at October 1st, which was to allow them anywhere on all 178 bus stops. Option three is a variation that allows them to be placed on arterial or arterial and collector streets, but not on the residential streets. All of those assume that you're going to limit them to bus stop benches and not on the shelter structures themselves. And then the only other question is whether you want to require that all signs face the street. So those, those are the options that we have laid out. One, you're just doing what you did before. Two, is the position that Ms. Good ever advocated, which was to allow them on all 178 locations. Three would limit them to either arterial streets or arterial and collector streets regardless of the adjacent zoning. So I would take any questions you had on those options.
I make motion that we, the planning commission could modify its recommendation to recommend that signs be allowed to be placed on bus, bus stop benches located on arterial streets, but not at locations on collector and residential streets.
Facing the, facing the street?
Facing the street.
Okay. I'll second it. It's been motioned and seconded. Those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll go ahead and vote no again.
Okay, so I have that motion carrying as a six to one vote, and we will communicate your modified recommendation to the city commission. We thank you for devoting time to that.
Next on the agenda, any administrative items?
We have no administrative items for you today. Under, we don't have any preliminary discussion items. Under unfinished or other business, we have some really unfinished business. Last night, the city commission approved four benefit districts for perimeter street improvements. One dealing with Markley Road, one and three dealing with improvements to Holmes Road. And we had an application that came before you for the plating of Wheatland Valley addition on the east side of Markley Road, and you approved that in September 2017. It's now November 2019. They had 12 months to complete the final plating of their property, but they were unable to because there was no resolution for the improvements to be made to Markley Road. That was resolved last night. So we are going to reactivate that application, and while you will not meet on the 19th of November, there is no business scheduled for that meeting, we will have a meeting on December 3rd where we will bring back the Wheatland Valley applications and update you on what was decided on improvements to Markley Road and Holmes Road. But that has paved the way for subdivisions to go forward that have frontage on both Markley Road and Holmes Road because that all got resolved last night. And then we are, have been working through the summer and fall with a downtown arts and entertainment steering committee to create an overarching arts and entertainment ordinance to allow for all the additional street and plaza activities and sidewalk activities that we anticipate with the completion of the downtown streetscape projects. And December 3rd, we're going to be presenting those various aspects to you at that meeting and giving you an overview. We're dealing with activities like sidewalk entertainment, outdoor merchandise areas, vendors and push carts, food trucks. You'll have to, Lauren just left, so she can't remind me what I left out, but we have been, we're dealing with special event permits and with, well, buskers and street entertainers, but focusing on the use of the plazas, the sidewalks, and the public areas downtown, many of which, as you have learned in your long discussions on signs in the right-of-way, when you're dealing with activities and things in the publicly owned space, we don't have a lot of ordinances in place to allow for those types of activities. So, we're dealing with sidewalk dining, outdoor dining, those types of things. Related to that, we, one of the things that was done, partially in response to a number of drinking establishments that were opened in the downtown area, one of the things the planning commission recommended was that establishments that served alcohol, that were having outdoor serving areas, that those be reviewed by the planning commission. There's a proposal to have a Yaya's European Bistro in the Homewood Suites Hotel building, and they're proposing to have an outdoor dining and service area. So they're becoming before you with their plans for that area, and.
That wouldn't be in the right-of-way.
It would not be in the right-of-way. It will be on their own private property. And so, Yaya's is proposing both to have outdoor dining on, on the inside, next to the hotel, but then also out on the sidewalk on Santa Fe. And then adjacent to Yaya's is a proposed Starbucks, and they're proposing a sidewalk dining area there as well. But I just wanted to give you a heads up that the, the Wheatland Valley has been unable to move forward because of the lack of resolution on Markley Road, but that was resolved last night, and so that will be coming back to you. We'll bring you back up to date on that. And then, we've had some discussions, and what we're going to try to do, and we get everyone lined up, would be to have representatives of the fire department, municipal golf course, and engineering division here and present and making reports to you if we should bring back the application related to the Grand Prairie addition. We owe it to you as a commission to have you hear from those departments directly as opposed to having us or others report what their positions are. So if we can get that worked out, we'll be bringing that back to you as well. But we're going to give you the 19th off and then load you up on December 3rd, so.
Thank you.
But we have no other business for you this evening.
On the public forum, any members of the public which is to comment anything?
Justin Hanky, 1322 Bentgrass Drive. I was involved in the September 3rd PDD application of Phase 3 of Grand Prairie, as well as the October 15th PDD withdrawal and the R1 rezoning. That last meeting, obviously, a lot of people got up and spoke, and there's a lot of noise and smoke. And so, I wanted to try and summarize kind of what has gone on, just because I'm not available in the future for those meetings. So kind of what I've learned is the city planning commission is extremely dependent upon the zoning administrator for all applications, providing details and documents regarding those applications. So the concern happens is what if the zoning administrator's not presenting appropriate facts and details to you guys? On September 3rd regarding the PDD and the emergency access road, this is what we heard.
It's probably not beneficial.
Access road from Markley?
Yes.
I can't imagine having machinery, fire trucks crossing some of the fairways. And, you know, especially with this weather we've been having.
The, there are concrete pavers that have been installed across the golf course. Concrete pavers are a device that you have concrete with hollowed spots where the grass grows up between them, and in order to support the weight of a fire truck, they have to be able to support 75,000 pounds. And so there is a road that goes from Markley Road to the north end of this subdivision that is, consists of concrete pavers that the fire department believes supports. that is, consists of concrete pavers that the Fire Department believes supports the weight of their fire trucks. The other reason that we know that it works is because until Grand Prairie got developed, this was the site of all the City of Salina fireworks shows, and fire trucks were driven to the site regularly for the fireworks displays. And so, the Fire Department has regularly driven fire trucks from Markley Road back to the site for fireworks displays.
All right, and then?
So, it was clearly stated there, there are concrete pavers. They've been installed across the golf course, and a road there that consists of those concrete pavers. We know it works because it was used regularly. And let's be honest, if, on September 3rd, if we weren't here, that application would have been approved. There would have been no questions asked, the PDD would have been going through. So, on October 15th, this is what we heard.
I just wanted to ask DeAndrew a couple of questions. Last meeting, we discussed the emergency access road through the golf course, and you assured us the road was safe and able to serve as a separate access road for emergency vehicles. Is that correct?
There is a plan, and there are easements in place for that emergency access road. There is not a piece connecting to Bentgrass Drive or down Bentgrass Drive at this time.
But the access road does exist within the golf course?
Yes.
Okay. Last time, Mr. Buff, I believe you asked about the ability to support emergency vehicle, and you responded with, there are concrete pavers. Can you tell me where these concrete pavers are, what they look like, what they're made out of?
I can give you the design specifications for them that I have here in this item here. If you give me some time, I'll run upstairs and make some copies for you.
You have a rough idea?
I do not have a rough idea because I'm not the city's civil engineer, but I know they've been reviewed by the City Engineering Department.
Who has assured you that these are functional?
I don't have any assurances that they are functional from the Engineering Department at this time. I have the design plans for them. There's an easement in place, and there was a pre-existing road there.
Okay. Uh, can you go to the next slide?
So, there, there's a plan in place now with easements. The road doesn't exist. There's no concrete pavers, not even a rough idea of the concrete pavers, but there are design specifications for a civil engineer. There's no assurance that those concrete pavers worked when we were already told that they was used regularly, and there is a pre-existing road, which is a dirt path, which we saw on that PowerPoint from October 15th. That's a pretty big change in between two meetings for something that exists, and it's concrete pavers. We were then told later in the meeting that the fire code in 2009 regarding emergency access roads did not have the same requirement as they do currently.
With whether the application meets the zoning requirements, and so, this is a separate issue?
I believe you had stated that this needs to meet all regulatory requirements, and that would be the fire code.
Seeing what?
This clearly isn't safe. You're knowingly going to vote to potentially hurt people.
Okay, so that is one of the requirements in the, to meet the?
It was not a requirement 2009. It is a requirement?
There is no way those guidelines in 2009 would have allowed that path to support a 75,000 pound vehicle. No way.
So, here are the guidelines from 2006 and 2009. The ones presented last meeting, as well as a text exchange between myself and the Fire Department official that I was communicating with, and a picture of them giving me the fire codes that we presented. There's also another resident here that was with me when we took the Fire Department out on the golf course to assess the golf cart path. The only real difference of the 2009 guidelines from the ones that I presented was that the radius of the turning on the access road is determined by the Fire Marshal. Everything else was the same. A secondary emergency access road is required for all developments with more than 30 homes. The road has to have an unobstructed width of 20 feet and a vertical clearance of 13 and a half feet. Requiring the road to be 20 feet wide explains to the new radius guidelines of 35 inner turning radius and 55 feet outer turning radius. And the road has to support the weight of a fire truck and an all-weather surface. What I've been hearing recently from a couple of people I know that work for the city is the current plan is to move forward with building a road that actually meets the fire code through the golf course because it was approved in '08 and '09. I really couldn't help but wonder what kind of Planning Commission approved a process to build 375 yards of road that are, that's 20 feet wide through a municipal golf course. That doesn't make any sense to me. So, doing more research, I found the transcript from March 18th, 2008, when this proposal was presented. Just reading it to you, Mrs. Soderberg asked, and then the access road, the secondary road, Mr. Andrew stated, you may have to go back to the other one, John, because you can pan on that one. I think she's wanting to see the aerial photo. Mrs. Soderberg asked, stated, yes, I want to see the aerial photo. Photo, Mr. Andrew stated, there are a couple ideas we've had about grass pavers and different things like that, but I'll let Steve speak to that. Mr. Snyder stated, basically, that exists today. There's a gate off of Markley. It crosses in front of number three tee box, but basically before you get to the fairway, the irrigated part of the fairway. The cart paths have been thickened up, beefed up, if you will, where the areas where the truck would cross those. The reason they exist, we have had occasions where emergency vehicles have had to respond to the golf course, an ambulance. Also, up through recent times, fireworks have been shot in this particular area, and emergency vehicles have had to come on and support staff has come in. So, that basically exists today, and we are just looking at continuing it. And we feel that addressing some of those concerns with grass-type pavers and the areas that are not on the paths or crossing the paths today is very suitable to us. I would like, it would be, like I said, just an emergency access point. Mr. Funk then asked, any other questions of staff? And there wasn't, they moved on. So, the Commission in '08 was informed that there was already a functional road in place with beefed up or thickened cart paths, and they would just need to add some grass-type pavers on the areas not on the beefed up cart paths. They were not informed the cart paths discussed only consisted of at most 10 feet of that 375 yards needed of road. That grass-type pavers are not an all-weather surface. They get overgrown by the grass, can't be identified. That there are no thickened or beefed up cart path spots on the golf carts. That is not true. The dirt path that already exists is only functional for emergency vehicles when it is bone dry in July during the fireworks. Any other time it rains, that path can't be used. There was not approval to build a road that would be needed and meet fire code. They approved a few grass-type pavers. I've met with multiple people at the golf course who have worked there since way before the Grand Prairie project was proposed. None of them know of any concrete pavers, grass-type pavers, or beefed up areas of the golf cart path made for emergency vehicles. Everyone wants to avoid going on record, though, because they're worried about repercussions. If something like this exists and you know of it, let's go out and see it, because I'm out there and I can't find anything. And to further clarify with me speaking tonight, if you feel like this process is being done appropriately, please feel free to move forward with it. I do not expect the Planning Commission to acknowledge anything. I'm only speaking tonight to bring public awareness about this process. I do not feel that this process will be done appropriately without public knowledge of it and close monitoring. That municipal golf course is an amazing asset for this community. Golfers, childrens, families, use it and enjoy it. It should not be exploited the way it has been for this process. It has not been presented honestly. This entire project has been a ruse based on the facade of a dirt path being a functional road, and it's not. With that, that's all I have tonight, so I won't keep you here. KU game starts soon. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you.
Yes, I'll get to you. So, that is correct. I will be recusing myself from any further involvement in the Grand Prairie project. And on September 3rd, I misinformed the Planning Commission that the road had been constructed as part of Phase 1. It had not been constructed as part of Phase 1. Between that hearing and the October 15th hearing, I learned that it was not, it was not constructed. The path is there. An emergency access easement has been granted by the City Commission across the golf course. The Director of Parks and Recreation, Steve Snyder, presented to the Planning Commission his approval for its finalization. The plan, original plan was to construct the actual fire apparatus road when Bentgrass Drive was completed. That is being re-looked at now in light of the, how it relates to the fire code. So, if that item comes back, you will have representatives of the golf course, of the Fire Department, and from Engineering Division so that you won't have to hear any reports But the, it's important that you hear directly from either the Fire Chief or the Fire Marshal as to what, what has transpired to date with Grand Prairie. It's important that you hear from the Director of Parks and Recreation, who oversees the golf course, and it's important that you hear from the City Engineer as it relates to drainage and runoff, so that if that item comes back, you will be hearing from those parties and not from me.
Just to kind of summarize or maybe get more clarity on it, kind of what I'm getting is basically, you acted on good faith with information that you thought was correct, and just somewhere along the line, it just?
Provided to me by the previous Fire Marshal, who is now in Houston, Texas.
So, it's, I guess, to put it bluntly, it's not your fault that that, that's my opinion.
Well, what is?
You have the information presented to you, and it's?
What is incorrect is that Phase 3, the final phase of Grand Prairie, could ever be developed without finalization of that fire apparatus road. And what Mr. Shepherd told this body is that the road's not there, hasn't been constructed. It has not. The path is there, the existing path that fire trucks and ambulances used to use is there. The grass pavers, the reinforcement, the 20-foot width is not there, but there's also nothing to connect it to. So, if you built the road from Markley Road over to its point, and then you needed to get an emergency vehicle from where it terminates down to where Bentgrass Drive currently ends, you would have to construct an additional fire apparatus road that was not anticipated. Then you'd have to tear that fire apparatus road out and put the street in. And so, even if it was there in its entirety, it wouldn't connect to the subdivision because you still have 900 feet of Bentgrass Drive that has not been constructed.
So, you're talking about putting a street across the fairway?
It's, it's not a street.
It's a grass, grass type?
It's going to be a combination of grass pavers and compacted gravel.
Does that take into account the fact that the entrance to that subdivision is considerably different than most in our town, as far as it has the two?
The reason, the reason for the divided entry was because if there was a blockage on one side, that the other side was potentially available for access.
Okay.
And that's, that's why it has the divided entry.
I just want to clarify a couple of things, because you make a very good point. The thing that concerned me with the two changes that he presented was there was no delay in saying that that road was not there when I asked about it October 15th. He had previous knowledge that that wasn't there. When you're asking about building a road across the fairway, that is what is designed for it to be up to fire code. When I spoke to some of the officials, not officials, but employees at the golf course, they said that's not even reasonable because of the irrigation that's already in place across the third fairway. It's also not reasonable to build a road across a golf course for that purpose. Obviously, you've seen a lot of the residents of this development. Everybody wants to work together to figure this out. However, that doesn't excuse that the original approval was based on less than honest facts in '08. I mean, they gave that approval thinking there was a road that was already working. Unfortunately, we're just in a situation where we're? Absolutely. Yeah. You've been handed a? I, I think there is a reasonable proposal, I guess, in December when we talk about that. I hope that the Grand Prairie residents are notified about that, see if we can come, because I do think there is a reasonable option to fix this that isn't across the golf course building a road. However, I don't see how Phase 3 is going to be able to be developed without that road. That's not, in terms of the number of properties, without building that road across the golf course, which, if that's going to happen, citizens need to know that we're going to build a road across the golf course, because nobody's going to think that's reasonable. And it's not.
So, there's 27 homes there now?
There's 27 homes there now.
So, we don't need the road?
Currently, without, without Phase 3, there are lots of, no, total houses and lots open.
In Phase 1?
Phase 1 and 2. 62-ish? I have to check those numbers. It's in there. So, I, I think if there's another connection point that isn't across the golf course, you can reasonably put in 60 and be up to fire code, and if the Fire Marshal wants to sway one or two homes, I don't think that's unsafe, but there's obviously a big error here, so.
Thank you.
And we, we provided that information before. We will provide that again, but there's 35 homes in Phase 1, or 35 building lots in Phase 1. There's 17 building lots in Phase 2. Both of those have been approved for home construction, so that equals 52 lots. And then there's 18 currently platted for Phase 3, for a total of 70. That was the original layout of Grand Prairie, and the item that's under discussion is how many lots there will be in Phase 3.
So, as it sits now, not to beat a dead horse, so to speak, but without Phase 3, is the current setup up to the fire code?
Even Phase 1 is not up to the fire code if, if that is strictly applied, but the Fire Marshal does have some latitude to look at alternate means. And so, you will, you will get a full report if that item ever comes back that will be represented by the, either the Fire Marshal or the Fire Chief and not by other staff.
Anyone else from the public?
And I have had the, there will be individualized mail notice to every property owner in Grand Prairie before this appears on your agenda, so.
Okay. I think we're ready for adjournment.
It's removed.
I second it.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 You had a heck of a?